Okay. I think councilor, there's three on.
Three on? Yep, you got, you got four.
You're the only one. Are you okay? Okay, welcome everyone to the public hearing we're having tonight, the Wassa's Frontways Recycling District Board Meeting and Public Hearing. We are beginning tonight, November 14th at 6:00 p.m. at the district offices. We'll begin with Katrina Garcia, our board secretary in the role call. Chair Sherry Orne.
Here.
Wester Dan Givens.
Here.
Anna Barbiere.
Here.
Cindy Sharky.
Here.
Diane Turner. Excuse. Eric Barney. Keith Sussman.
Yo.
Laurie Stringham.
Yeah.
Patrick Schaefer.
Here.
Robert Pignon.
Here.
Scott Bracken.
Yes.
Scott Little, excuse. Tessa Stichter.
Present.
Tom Cyrus. Okay, perfect, thank you. We move on to item number 1.1, which would be the one, the consent items, which is October 24th, 2022 Board Meeting Minutes. Does anybody have any questions or comments on the minutes? If not, I would accept a motion.
I'll, I'll move, this is Councilmember Givens from Holiday City. I'll move approval of October 24th, 2022 Board Meeting Minutes.
Okay, we have a motion, can I get a second? Second, Cindy Sharky. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any comments? If not, all those in favor? Aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Okay. We'll move to item number two, which is the meeting opens for public comments. This is simply the public comment portion of it, not the public hearing portion of it. So do we have anybody here wishing to make public comments to the board?
Do you hear a comment on the budget or do you want to address the board in general? Sorry. Mr. Rasm.
And I, I don't see anyone online either. Did you see anybody? Okay. It does not appear that we have anybody here to stand on that. We'll move on to item number three, business items. 3.1, review the 2023 tentative budget presentation and the tentative made of top 2023 budget as fee schedule. Pam and Tom.
Thank you. Maybe you'll scroll to page 28. So the only thing different that we have in, in this presentation that we already presented to you in October is the fact that I did add the organization charts just to illustrate that it takes all of us working together to develop a budget and then make the services happen. And so of course you as a board are right there governing the district and helping us to make sure we have the resources available to us to provide the services to the residents, the services that they want and some demands there. Of course, our legal counsel is wonderful and I will go through everyone, but I do want to, the fact that Yael Johnson is our customer service manager and she's here with us tonight. We have present most of our executive administrative team with Renee, Katerina, Paul and Tom and Ashley Ashton, our HR manager, and Matt Ferguson is right back there, he's our controller. I also want to let you know that recently we filled two positions, they were the new ones that you approved, with the safety emergency coordinator and the data and program specialist. And we were, I also want to thank you for having that paper experience involved because Shane Norris will join us as our safety and emergency preparedness manager. He comes with about 15 years of experience and a master's degree in public administration for emergency management. And so we're very thankful that he joined our team. Very excited to have him come in and take the ball and run. And then we have Jorge Benitez that will be joining us for the data and program specialist. And Renee that has to have him start, and we can start tracking the data and reporting out. We have a great team of managers, supervisors, and of course our frontline equipment operators who wanted me to thank you as well for the salary market adjustment that you've allowed as part of the budget. Thank you. So scrolling down, getting into the tentative budget priorities, you have seen these and Paul and I have been out to each of your respective councils to talk about what are priorities we're coming in, keeping the services that we have, and then managing the increased cost with the fee increase, which was our last resort. And as you're very aware, our last fee increase for the base fee was back in 2018. So it has been five years since we've been permitted a fee increase. So we'll move from that $19 per month to nineteen, excuse me, $17 per month to nineteen fifty, and then fifty-eight, fifty a quarter, two hundred and thirty-four annually. And then we have other increases for containers and so forth. The town of Wrighton will receive a fee increase, and I did with the town council, okay, that was just last week, politics and running together, but the mayor and the council bear support and understanding. It's been a while since they've had a team and understand the need why. Okay, I won't go into a lot of that detail, we can just scroll down unless you have questions. Personnel budget, I think we have a 3.3 increase for our health insurance, the negative 9.4 reduction in our dental premiums with going to different providers, have a broader network of Tessa and Orson Dobbins, so our employees are pretty happy to see that package. We added benefits for health wellness with mental health services available, and it's pretty much making people terroids. And Lou Novus is the provider for that, we're already coming out and moving with our staff separately from our benefits fair that actually, actually put together last week for our employees. Lou Novus separately, because it is so unique and so specialized, they'll come out and go over their services with our employees.
See, I do.
Unless you have questions, just keep rolling. Gone through the operational highlights and the customer service with the new website, if you haven't checked it out, please do. And there is a QR code there to get into the recycle right. If you have a question of what's recyclable, you type it in on your mobile app and you can get that answer that goes in the black cam and you can. Okay, keep rolling. Here's our budget and Paul, if you have any highlights to review or do you have questions?
I didn't have too much additional, we talked about this before and Dan mentioned it increased the $2.50 per month increase, which was a significant bump for us in revenues. And that's the primary increase there. I don't know if there's any other questions, we've talked about this a couple of times in this meeting and also been around the talk to different councils, so.
I've mentioned a couple of things, recycling would increase to $40 a ton, adjusted that. And then this does include the wages and the benefits, everything associated with those adjustments. I don't know if there's any questions, like I said, we've talked about this a couple of times.
Yeah, the only comment I have is on the recycle fees, is this that we all understand that it's very volatile and it could go well above $40 or something like that, but that's when I think we might have to commit to that.
Yeah, we'll have to see how the other cabinet works and doing that. Basically.
Personnel for the whole year.
Yeah.
One, one question, Dan Givens from Holiday. I wonder if Pam or Paul could summarize what we might have done to ameliorate cost increases, what have we done to tighten our belts, to save, you know, budget saving? Obviously, we're considering voting an increase, but what have we done? Have we done everything we can to avoid that through cost-saving measures? And if so, kind of summarize what those might be.
Yeah, thank you. So Renee, this is back up one slide, appreciate you asking that. Actually, I think it's, keep going, I think it's page 29. Right there, okay. So thanks for asking that. We, we have looked at ways to improve our efficiencies. We implemented the use of technologies in 2018, which has really been, if you look at the cost benefit, it actually, the benefits of having equipment like cameras on our trucks or GPS and then the use of GIS systems for routing and mapping to really improve efficiencies. And, and we're looking at the use of tablets more frequently this year, it's where the supervisors, managers, and the leading equipment operators have the use of maps right at their fingertips. And we can trigger knowing where a truck is, if there's a mist can, we can give it that same day rather than going back. As you can imagine, that saves dollars and cents. When it costs, I think it was $11 a mile or something like that, just for fuel and maintenance. So you can see that there's a big savings there. The other thing is, and I've talked to municipalities as I did with the, with Paul and I did, about the use of C and G. So especially right now, if you look at the consumer price for diesel, it's over $5 a gallon. And for C and G, we've been quoted over $4 a gallon and $2 a gallon for C and G. And all of our heavy equipment, the ones that go out to the neighborhood, they have the side load can and the front load trucks that go up immigration for container sites and right, and they're all C and G. We purchase over a half a million gallons of fuel every year, and we would do that no matter what kind of fuel we would purchase, that the truck's gaining about $2 a gallon. So we anticipate saving a million dollars next year until the end of August. And I think that's actually a very conservative number, I think it's going to be a lot more than that. I won't keep reporting that to you. So those are some of the, the highlights, of course, there's been others, but those are the ones I'm looking at, the big ones. Thank you.
I have one question, that's okay?
Yeah.
And I published, Scott Bracken from Calum High, the URS contribution, that's something the district pays on behalf of all of the employees that are signed in with URS.
That's correct, and that's a rate that they provide and publish and they give us every year. And so it stayed the same for a couple of years, it actually decreased coming up, which seems odd to me, if that's what happened.
I think they may be based on very prior information, but the rate actually decreased.
Now, that's what the district's name, they want to jump on.
Pretty much.
Yeah, oh, it is.
It's a good, very nice.
And then there's tier one and tier two, depending upon when people were hired, but that's, the district paid that for all employees, depending upon what category they're in.
Thank you. Other questions or comments before we move into the public hearing? Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And I would just reiterate that even though it seems that we covered it very briefly here tonight, the board has reviewed this for quite some time now and asked a lot of different questions, and there's been a thorough examination of the budget and the fee increase. And actually, this fee increase has been talked about ever since, like, from the board. And so it's been pushed out quite a while, so I appreciate the diligence that went into, it's just really trying to see where we can tighten our belts and where we can improve efficiency, so we get kickback as long as possible. Thank you for that. All right, no one else has any comments on this? We'll move on to item 4.4, public hearing to allow comments on the 2023 tentative budget as fee increases. 4.1 is to open the public hearing on the tentative we adopted 2023 tentative budget and public hearing on a proposed change to the fee schedule. So we will go to 4.2, citizen's public input. Do we need a motion to open the public hearing? Oh, yeah, sorry, I need a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Eric Barney?
Yes.
And second by Roger.
Yes, I don't need to see that.
And a second, a second by Roger. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Okay, we'll go ahead and move forward with our public hearing, and we have Mr. Rasm. Would you go ahead and introduce yourself?
My name's Kenneth Matson, and I live in Taylorsville. I may be unique, I usually have one or two small bags that go in the garbage can a week. So if I buy myself a metal can and put a lid on it, I probably wouldn't fill it for a full month. And then if I took it to the garbage can, or garbage dump, and then brought it back, the fee to get in about $10, and then, because it weighs less than 20 pounds, and the gas to get there and back, and it's maybe $5 on the expensive version. And if I did it instead of every month, every two, three months, because I can easily fill more than one garbage can and back to my pickup truck. So I could really go that way, and I only fill my garbage can twice a year, spring cleaning, the yard, fall cleanup for the yard. Other than that, it's lucky if I got more than two bags deep in the bottom of my garbage can. And that's the older round ones, because I know the new plastic ones, there seem to be breaking ones from my neighbors, just I dragged a lot of their cans back in. But it's amazing that it costs so much for your garbage truck to go around. I used to ride around with another garbage truck, and we did businesses and stuff with that. And I don't remember what it cost then, but that was in the seventies. And it was nice to pick up those P D count cans and throw them in the back of the truck and empty them and, and stuff. So I'm still not worried about picking them up and moving them, but even though taxes are going up on everything because the property values hit, I noticed you don't have a line for property tax too, but I was really concerned because I never looked at the water, I didn't want that 28% increase in theirs for their budget caring. So every little dollar adds, I'm on social security and I'm not even getting my full social security until next year. And so I don't get any of these cost of living raises because I'm not on my social security, and they won't be added to my new one when I start my own social security. So I know a lot of people are on tight budgets, and that's why I wanted to bring it up and come. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for being here. No one lines, thank you? No one is. Yeah, we'll close the hearing. Seeing no one else here for any public input, I would take a motion to close the public hearing.
We?
Sorry.
There's a 4.3 there for comments. They will be, sorry, but I, I saw a thing that, and this is Scott Bracken from Calum High, if that's okay, I am on the tentative fee increase, and forgive me if this was discussed when I wasn't here, if you could catch me up, I saw there's a proposed new feature scrap.
Eliminating from today.
That's not part of the new budget or it is?
No.
So that's gone.
Yeah.
That's a big surprise.
No, 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 that's gone.
Okay. Then I, then I find that, that was, that was, that was new to me, so.
No, thank, thank you for bringing that up, we have discussed that and, and we discussed it at the board at length, really, and opted to hold off on that and do a full evaluation of the scrap programs, really understand the costs that are associated with it and what we.
All right, that was, yeah, I was, I was concerned, because that was, I, you know, it tells teach me that it's important.
It is not on the fee schedule at all, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, and I apologize for, for getting out like that, out of order here. So we will move on to 4.3, board comments. You did. Now, does anybody else have any comments?
No, I want to, I want to thank our citizens for coming this evening, Mr. Matson, and expressing your concerns, and we do hear you. This is really hard to increase just the $4 or $5, $2.50 that we did a year or a month. It, it was looked at for over a year or two, at least two that I've been here, and I think what really pushed it over the edge, and Pam can talk a little bit more about that if you wish, is the cost of fuel has just really driven up. The cost of, of collecting people's garbage and keeping our communities clean and safe, health-wise, as well as the maintenance and trying to get trucks. And that really has made such a huge difference. So I feel good about this budget, this tentative budget, and I feel really good about taking a deep dive into the scrap program next year and seeing if we, where that takes us. So just wanted to add that, and thanks, Mr. Matson, for showing up tonight.
And I would add that scrap program itself, although it was forced on us by the pandemic somewhat, changed from the area cleanup, was the reduction in cost probably at this, at this hundreds of thousands of dollars, because we were forced to change.
Well, and hardly that's because we haven't staffed it fully either, and so.
Unable to staff it fully, that's been.
What is the comment to hear that? So it's a little less services too, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, you, you reduce some of those costs, but I don't know if that's good or not, but.
Yeah, I thi, I think it's super difficult, and I can, I can relate to what Mr. Matson is saying, I, I hope, thank you for being here, it's so important that public participate in these things. But it's difficult because we have to stop it at every home, it's kind of what our, our mandate is to make sure that we stop at every home that's in the city, and so the cost is insane, whether the can has one bag in it or whether it's overflowing, it's two, our trucks up and down the road is, is insane. And so it's calculated out and it sets those taxes fees based on those costs that we've had. Fuel is incredibly high right now, but in addition to that, and part of it from the pandemic and things like that, and just the cost of supply, I can't even fathom the cost of the garbage truck. I mean, is it $100,000 higher in two years? I mean, those kinds of things are just staggering for us to try and absorb that. And then in addition to that, our highest thing is wages, which most organizations have that same thing, but we have to be competitive because we can't just go, well, we don't, we just won't pick up garbage this week because we don't have enough drivers, everyone, you know, quit or call in sick, we have, we have to pick up the trash. And so we have to figure out a way to be competitive, and it's hard in this environment with the, with the employment situation, it's really difficult to keep that. So we have to just compete with the private market, you, the government didn't have to compete quite so much because we had benefits that learned people to us, but it's, that's playing so the same level quite a bit, and so it's difficult. And then on the other side, it's just like, it's really difficult to know when people are struggling and know that they're on sick day, can you know, oh, now we have to charge it a little bit more because people will say, oh, it's only $28, I think, a year now, but that one, plus the water bill, plus the library, plus the mosquito, plus every other thing on your, on your taxi, it, it's hard, it gets expensive, but that's why I think that we've tried really hard to analyze this crunch numbers, do all the analysis you have talked about, I think even hiring those two additional people, one of the two, because one to do better data analysis to see, is there anywhere else we can crunch numbers? Is there anywhere else we can really shrink these costs down so that we don't have to, you know, have more fee increases and such stuff? So I appreciate the work that you write staff, I appreciate the board members who have looked at this and analyzed this so that we can make good decisions, even though we recognize it's very difficult to impose it on, and are restructured publicly. Okay, very remarkable. Do you have, do you have some comments, officially, you want us to make?
I can either do it now or if you want to, when we get into the possible adoption, we can look at the fee schedule. We do have a half rate for anyone that has indigent circumstances, they can apply to the treasurer's office, and it is, basically, they would say the 1975 would be that half rate of 1950. And, and so I'm happy to work with Mr. Matson to see if that's something that he may qualify for. And then, as you mentioned, we, we have cost increases, the fee charge of 34, you can just jump there, I don't know if you can just jump to it. But I just, you mentioned the 34. Right there. So, so you mentioned the, the cost is that tight, so personnel is the highest expense, and we do, we're competing, as you mentioned, because CDL shortages are happening nationwide in different industry. We're hoping that with the slowdown of the economy and with housing construction slowing down, maybe we can entice some of those drivers from that industry over to us that help fill the seats. We have five agencies right now, six, but we, we have one that we're hoping will join our team and be enticed by that sort of package, and the fact that we will have another salary increase in January. So I appreciate your comments, and I do understand, and you mentioned the mandates, it's, we don't have, I mean, we, we have to, by law, provide every home a container, a black can at a minimum, and go by every week and take that up, no matter how much weight in the general.
I'd just like to add, I, I'm one of the newest members to this board, and it has been really refreshing to be part of an organization, Pam and with Wassa's Frontways Recycling District, to see the effort and the attention that goes into the decisions that are being made, their ability to answer our questions as the board has been tremendous, they're thoughtful, they're thorough. It's like as a board, we ask a lot of really good questions and they always have a good answer. And so, as uncomfortable as it is for us to make a decision to raise the rate, knowing that that's common across all these service districts, I, I'm comfortable and confident in the amount we're doing, as well as the justification for doing it. It's not comfortable that you have to spend more, but it is, is reassuring that I, my confidence in this group and with the staff here is tremendous, so I want to do one record for that.
Does any, does anyone else have?
Just, I would note that this, the increase, if approved, is actually two years later than what we originally planned for a variety of reasons. Just cost cutting, pandemic, health, type of thing, so, and this is, this, I'm not, I have now that, now that Jim has moved on.
You're, you're telling me.
I'm an old one on the board, and this will be the second time. Longest serving, let's put that way. And this is the second time that we've had to do this in like 10 to 12 years that I've been here, so. It comes out to about 5% per year since our last one, which was higher than inflation until this last year, and so it's, it's unfortunate, but, and you don't see the tax, property tax thing, because although while we are legally allowed to assess the property tax, we do not, we keep it strictly fee-based.
Cindy Sharky, so Cindy, I'd like to say that what impressed me throughout this process is not only a good description from the staff of the need, but also a detail of the cost cutting that had happened. So before, before making a very specific ask, it was, we received all the information about the cost cuts that have taken place, all the efforts that have been made to reduce costs before this came, it's pretty much.
costs before this came, and it's pretty much the last resort and the lowest possible amount. So as a board member, I appreciate that, having it presented that way, not just how much more revenue is needed, but how much effort's been made to reduce that and to cut costs to get to the lowest possible number, so appreciate that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Does anybody online or anything like to make any comments? Okay, we're going to go on to four point four. Just have, we really are going to accept the motion to close the public hearing.
This is Anna with Taylor'sville on the motion to close the meeting, close the public meeting.
Eric Barney, Magno, second.
Okay, we have a motion to close the public hearing in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item number five is five point one, for an option to adopt the resolution four four one six, exhibit A, twenty twenty-three budget, C, budget and fee schedule, including fee adjustments.
Slow down, Renee, there's a resolution in that Tico. That's the fee schedule, we have another fee schedule. Or there we go, there's the resolution.
Okay, I'll just clarify, in regard to, for remember Bracken's comments, that, that fee was removed from it, right?
Yeah.
You double-checked, okay, all right. Could I give a note?
I'm wondering why you found that, so I'm gonna have to ask, before I miss this.
Okay. This one makes you.
Yeah, we scroll down to the fee schedule. This is exhibit A, and it goes over the budget, several expenditures of the fee. Scroll down one more, and we will see that there is no scrap fee. There's only the container, keep going, we're gonna call it. One more. There we go. There's that fourteen yard roll-off that if municipalities want to provide a cleanup for a resident or an area, that you could reserve a container, that's the fourteen yards. So this is separate, then the trailer rental. I know a lot of municipalities use the trailer rental for code enforcement, and if there's not a need for that larger container and want to save some dollars, there's this other option, this smaller container. So yeah, that's the only thing remotely.
Okay, because it was in the left for, for us, that's sideways.
Yeah.
It's been removed, appreciate that. Okay, does anyone have anything comments?
Well, I was, I was, no, I was, it was, with that, making sure that I was included. And I lost the page. Resolution four four one six.
I'll second the motion to approve resolution four four one six, adopting the twenty twenty-three budget and fee schedule and adopting identified fee increases.
Perfect, okay. The motion by Board Member Bracken and the second by Board Member Barney. Is there a discussion to this motion?
I had to say that the second was more complete with the first motion, in that he indicated the exhibit.
That's fine.
Thank you.
I amended that. Okay.
Sorry, is Robert. Robert's school.
Okay, perfect. All right, we have a motion in a second if there's no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Is there any opposed? Okay, now.
This is Tessa Stitzer with Copperton Metro Township Council. Seeing as though there was a public hearing held in this matter, I would feel comfortable if we did a roll call.
Yeah, thank you, Tessa, we were just discussing that, thank you. Um, okay, we'll do a roll call vote. We, we call out the names and.
Chair Shurey Warren.
Aye.
Vice Chair Daniel Given.
Aye.
Anna Barbieri.
Aye.
Cindy Sharkey.
Aye.
Dan Turner, excused. Eric Barney.
Aye.
Keith Dustin.
Aye.
Laurie Stringham.
Aye.
Patrick Schaefer just left the meeting. Robert Pignon.
Aye.
Scott Bracken.
Aye.
Scott, excuse, Tessa Stitzer.
Aye.
Tom Sirens.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, that's Patrick, you now. Next item is five point two. We need to either confirm or cancel the date for the next board meeting scheduled for Monday, December twelfth. It's customary if a budget passes in November that we, that we cancel the board member, the board meeting in December. Do you know of anything pressing that we would need to meet in December?
Oh, I'm sure I do not.
Okay.
Dan Given's from Holiday. I'll move that we cancel the board meetings scheduled for Monday, December twelfth at nine AM.
Councilmember Stitzer, Copperton Metro Township, I'll second that motion.
We have a motion in a second, is there a discussion? Okay, if not, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Is there any opposed? I don't know. Okay, five point three, board adoption of resolution four four one seven, approving Pam Roberts to serve as a board member on the Utah Local Government's Trust twenty twenty-three Board of Directors, and to receive compensation being directed to the district.
Okay, so can you go to that resolution? This is an annual request from the Utah Local Government's Trust that we, as board members, receive, adopt the resolution, use, use our governing body and my boss, allow me to serve on the trust board, and recognize the fact that there is a stipend for a meeting, a three hundred dollars per meeting. I turn that over to the district, and we use that for our annual party, or I should say celebration, sorry, end of year celebration, or we use it for a gift, end of year gift for employees. And it's basically fifteen hundred dollars a year for this five meetings, and that goes right to the district. And then I weigh the insurance policy, the life insurance policy, it's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I weigh that because I give benefits here from the district, and also receive salaries from the district, and I count that as going to the meeting. I weigh that. It seemed like there was, oh, mild reimbursement as well. I weigh that. That's what this is all about. Any questions for me, or? Rachel reviewed it and signed off.
Okay, is there any questions from the board? If not, I think a motion.
Approve of your approval of resolution forty four seventeen.
Second? I'll second, Anna with Taylor'sville. You have a motion by Scott and a second by Anna. Is there any discussion? Now, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Okay, unanimous. We give four, five point four general management for.
I'm gonna make this short and sweet, because it's almost the last item, and I think we all want to get one for the voice. We don't have Tico or whatever. And if you want to, if you wouldn't like it, we'll just. Privilege here, I want to introduce my wife, Renee, Robert. She joins us at least once a year, and I just want to thank her because you see all these meetings here that Paul and I attended. I'm sure you would have had Laura Lee here, she just got back from Montana about five o'clock, so, but she's been very supportive, and when I go to these meetings, either online, at home, or out and about to get home at nine o'clock through. So I know you do that all the time as elected officials, and just thanks for the support. You can see that we have pretty much wrapped up. We're at the tail end of our take it out and visiting with you as mayor and council. Tomorrow we have Murray City to visit with, and then I'll go back to Mill Creek City, since I visited them really early in September twelfth, and we didn't know quite where we were at as far as the fee increases and so forth. But the mayor and the council were very supportive at that time, so I don't think that they have any problems now. Talk about some of that if you'd like, excuse me, board member disaround. And then the second item, I just wanted to put up here that we, as staff, are very aware that we need to take a look at the scrap program. Not everyone's happy with it. I do want to have that disclaimer of not everyone's ever been happy with the container program, no matter how we ran it. So, but we recognize that we need to take a look at it, evaluate it, what's happening now, what are the true costs. We have, the cost did decrease, obviously, because we ran it differently. We don't have the staff that we used to have to put the containers out there, as you know. So these, the bullet points are basically ideas that we first look for. So that includes, you know, having central sites at parks during the timeframe of municipality. You know, they, they have two weeks worth, so we have central sites at parks with those containers where residents could haul their stuff. And, or a hybrid of central sites and then drop off where people may not be able to get their, their ways to those spots. One time each year, I think was mentioned by Vice Chair Given, that one time each year we are going out to and dropping them in the streets from municipality and rotating that through each year. There's a possibility of charges small fee that did come up, not just from staff, but that had been mentioned before, that, so that way we get sure that those that need it really get it and are willing to pay a small reduced fee to one of the trailer rentals. And then one of the most recent ones came from a community council, I believe, and this one was determine the number of containers that are available, and then you reach out to the people in charge, whether it's elected officials or a mayor of staff, and say, where do you want your containers, where is your problem area, or where do you think they would be the most beneficial? So that's, those are some of the ideas, and others can be.
They're all good ideas.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
Okay, any questions for us, or on this, or anything else?
Okay, we'll move on to item five point five, board nominations for the twenty twenty-three board vice chair. I would accept nomination, or if anybody just likes to vote.
May, may I just talk about how this works? So next January, the vice chair, which is Vice Chair Given, will succeed into the chair position, so we can have the vacancy of the chair, uh, vice chair. And normally we get the nominations this year, and a lot of times it's anybody that's willing. That's for a rat.
Willing, willing is good. Because sometimes you're four months into your vice chairmanship, and the chair moves across the street, and he's no longer the chair, and so you get, you get a bonus six months.
Right, like you had served before.
But I, I would nominate, having heard that Anna Barbieri, it would be blowing to serve in that position, I would nominate her for the vice chair position starting in January.
Come on, anyone else?
I, I did, I did, I did think about it.
Keith, I think we could work it out.
I'll take the first half, you take the second half, it's out of order.
I would be happy to do that.
Okay, we have a nomination of Anna. Anybody else?
Oh, I, I'm waiting.
Okay, okay.
I, I see the opportunity to, to serve, you know, and work with Pam, because as everybody else in this room and online have a different set of circumstances, whereas Brighton becomes a little unique, whereas it's, it's container pickup versus cans at every house. And working with Pam and the presentation that she made to the council, with the understanding of how the system works for the town of Brighton, the compactor that we use regularly, the cans that are available to other portions or other sections of Brighton, became really clear to the council because it's, again, our situation, in that, as Pam was looking at, you know, it was brought up in the meeting, particularly making sure that every, every household is contributing to the, to the overall pickup or service to Brighton. So that those were things that became apparent as we started, started to get into the nitty-gritty of who's paying, part season, who's paying full for the services that we do, we do receive. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we have Anna and Keith.
I was gonna say, we don't have a set process for how to handle it when we have multiple nominations, so you can do it how you like, we can.
Do that.
Yeah. Come on.
Anybody else want?
We could take the motions one at a time and see how people vote, or we could have people write on slips of paper and then, you know, play a traditional.
My feelings will not be heard if you do it publicly, so.
We could put our heads down. Another possible option would be if we postpone it up January, there's a pre-meeting the vice chair attends, and maybe have them attend that meeting. My bet, I'd change your opinion.
There isn't.
But we could also handle it, I mean, with just two or three, I think you probably have a better meeting, and then we would find, we could find a way with it in January. You and the new chair will, that would be another option. I'd find two.
How would you guys like to do this?
I'm fine if we vote this evening.
Do you just want to do a paper vote and count them, or do you want to do all on paper? If you're all in favor.
Papers are vote.
Okay.
Well, yeah, I'll, I'll work online, do that, or they. Send a message, pick a chat in.
Yeah.
We never hurry, because Pam's gonna miss the point.
It's okay, we'll survive, we have you two.
There you go, everybody just, you know what? That's great, why don't you do it? Everybody text Pam.
Text me?
Yeah, everybody just text Pam. Does everyone online understand that? We're going, we're going to, to vote between Keith Zuespin and Anna Barbieri for vice chair for next year, and could you all just send a text to Pam now, who you would like to vote for?
If I, Dan Given, if I can make a comment too, the, the option, the opportunity to serve is going to be open for many, many years. And, and we all serve at least four years in our, in our position. And so if, if, if you're not able to serve this year, there's surely the option to serve the, the next year, so I don't think, I don't think either of these potential vice chairs would feel bad if the other one got a chance to serve, they could probably be up the next year, so.
And it is a two-year, so you would serve this year as vice and next, and you're.
Following his chairman, exactly.
And there's one additional meeting per month, you go to the three boards.
One in January will be.
Okay. Okay, is everyone okay with this? Yeah, everyone's okay with that, right?
This is gonna take two weeks, I tell them.
Not that it's a count. Count, count, count.
We're about, we're about there.
We're, we're gonna back that.
We have our capital, we're gonna leave the vote counting, saying that. Maybe they.
So what was that projected meeting in January? Thirteen, fourteen? It's usually about ten days before.
It's usually about two more, right?
Fourteen.
No, no.
Thursday.
Eleven, there's only three board members online.
Tessa, Tom, and Laurie.
Laurie. Laurie, she's driving and.
She'll have to break the door and watch her pull over.
We'll still have to confirm this through a motion and an actual vote. Just sort of informal way to.
Sure.
Down.
The only one we haven't heard.
Okay, that's okay. Do we have a majority for one?
Yeah, the votes are in favor of Anna.
Okay.
We want to down a form.
Okay. So Anna, so Anna, the votes are in favor of you. I would say, thank you, Keith. Usually it's not, we don't even have a process because it's never, it's not how we have one, someone's doing it.
I think it makes next year's meeting easier.
So thank you for being willing. So I would check to, you have a motion. All right.
Make that motion again to confirm Anna Barbieri as vice chair next.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion in a second. Motion by Scott and second by Eric. Is there any discussion? I think I do. I'll do my best to learn for here. And then we got Keith right behind you, right?
Right.
Okay, good. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, back to Dan, and Anna Barbieri will serve as the vice chair for next year. All right, we don't have a need for a close session, correct? Is there any other board business? Is there anything that board members would like to share or discuss at this time?
If I could, this is council member Laurie Stringham. I just wanted to take a moment and just thank the staff and thank all those who put all the time and energy they have put into getting this budget up and going and all the work they've done to make sure that we've gone through the truth and taxation process. I appreciate it. I appreciate the numbers. I appreciate the transparency and wanted to say I'm grateful for the work that's been put in on that and grateful for our past leadership on this board as well. You guys have done a great job and just wanted to say thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, board member. Okay, then the next item is number eight. Next board meeting will be the General Managers' Report and then the 2022 Year in Financial Report and the succession for the chair of the vice chair. Awesome. Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn? Okay, we have a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all so much.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Yeah.
I just think people are personal.
Okay, Eric, you guys, I love your time.
I wanted to come and say hi.
No, we're tired. We got from Chelsea, and I was like, it's not correct. I heard there's acres being built. You think you can go walk around, you want to make sure. Thank you. Sorry, I can't get down to the faculty.